All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is the special Board of Education meeting for Monday, July 27th of 2020. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Appreciate you giving us your time. Just wanted to also mention that the Board of Education is together collectively at District Office. We are utilizing the Zoom to host this meeting for the benefit of the public to again be able to allow them with the current limitations on meeting size to observe on the proceedings tonight. So thank you all from the public for being here as well. Charlie, if you can call the roll?
Ms. Drake?
Here.
Ms. Doyle? Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Roby?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. We have a quorum. Thank you. So looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purposes of collective negotiations? Motion? Uh, motion?
Second.
Heather, second. Charlie?
Ms. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Roby?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, we are in closed session. We will reconvene later this evening. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you again for joining us. We've been in closed session since 7:00 PM and we have now returned to the special Board of Education meeting for Monday, July 27th, 2020. Charlie, if you can call the roll?
I'm sitting here.
Charlie, you're muted.
All right, Ms. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Roby?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Present.
Mr. Kerberg?
Here. You have a quorum. If you'd please join me for the Fledgling Allegiance. The Fledgling Allegiance stands by of the United States of America. It is reasonable or reasonable, one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. All right. Item three is the public comments portion of our meeting. Wanted to make mention that to date, the Board of Education has received over 2,500 emails to vote between a combination of the feedback@psd202.org email address that we set up along with the individual emails directed to the Board of Ed email inboxes directly. We want to thank the community for taking the time to share those with us. We always appreciate hearing from the community, especially on a topic as important as the items that we're dealing with now regarding the reopen plan and remote learning plan. So thank you all very much for who have taken the time to share your thoughts with us and please, as always, continue to share your thoughts with the Board of Education. Our email addresses are located on the district website and you are always able to email us regarding any topic at any point. All right, so moving on down to item four, the Return 20 Plan. And I will turn it over to Dr. April.
Thank you, Mr. Kerberg. Appreciate it. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to present the Return 20 Plan again to our Board of Education and public. We have a PowerPoint similar, very similar to as I presented last week or our team did on Monday, July 20th. We have a PowerPoint presentation and then also will be posted as a narrative, written narrative plan with many more details than what are contained in the PowerPoint or slideshow presentation. I will not read the narrative written plan.
Am I am muted now?
I'm sorry. We, the written narrative plan will not be read word for word. Again, a summary through the PowerPoint. Both documents will be presented as was done at the end of last meeting on our district website. So with that being said, Mr. Kerberg, do board members or yourself have any questions?
Do I have any questions at this point? All right, go ahead and move forward.
Okay. So we made several adjustments or amendments to the plan and those amendments or adjustments or changes or whatever term or word you'd like to use have been based upon feedback from many different groups. Feedback from parents, feedback actually from students through our Student Ambassador program, feedback from staff, feedback from our own district administration, and feedback in conversations with our Board of Education. So moving to slide one. As you can see, again, we consider safety the overarching principle of any return to school plan, be that in-person instruction, be that beginning remote only, whatever phase of the plan that we're in, the overarching goal is safety first. We again have tried to develop a plan that is concrete, sequential, logical, gives us a path to in-person instruction, all based upon local, federal, state health guidance, requirements, guidelines to keep students and staff safe. Again, as before, our survey respondents, these numbers have not changed substantially since our last presentation of a week ago. As you look at the bottom, we have several pictures or illustrations of the bottom left, first slide, in-person instruction. That is our goal to give back to in-person instruction. Once we are back to in-person instruction, you can see some feet standing there with arrows on the left or right. That represents choice. If we are or when we are back in in-person instruction, parents will have the choice to send their students for in-person instruction or participate with remote learning. The middle of slide or box picture at the very bottom, consistency. We want to be consistent with our approach, consistent with our expectations for staff and students, consistent in the communications with parents regarding the plan or phases of the plan. Fourth slide or picture on your bottom part of your screen is flexibility. Yes, we want to be consistent, but the plan as developed and presented also provides flexibility. And then lastly, on the bottom right, pictures of a meal which represent continuing in any format of education to feed our students who are in need. Again, those were the five benchmarks for the development of this plan and any modifications or amendments made to this plan. The next slide, we'll get into the meat of changes that have been made to the plan and to the original plan presented on July 20th. The administrative recommendation from myself and my district administrative team remains to begin the year in remote learning for all students. However, some changes to the original plan presented on July 20th include moving the start date for remote learning from August 21st to August 31st, fleshed out teacher expectations regarding communication and videos and define those clearly, allows for possible transition activities for a certain grade level or planning for those. The evaluation period in the original plan was at six weeks. We have adjusted that to move it up to four to six week window. And then if or when we do begin to return to in-person instruction, possible primary considerations being given that risk student or early elementary students do return. Those are the substantive changes made. Slide five, you can see these are the phases of the Illinois plan as a state. We're currently in phase four and no matter what school district, whether it's in-person or whether it's remote, needs to provide five hours of instruction to their students or if it's a combination of hybrid and remote learning. We will provide five hours of instruction. As with the plan earlier, we developed four, pardon me, within phase four, three phases and that began with phase four A going to a possible phase four B of in-person instruction and then more in-person in phase four C. Four A would begin every student in remote and that is on slide seven. The partners and the resources and the entities that we take direction from include all of those pictured on there, the State Board of Education, Center for Disease Control, United States Department of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health, State of Illinois, and obviously when it comes to athletics and activities, the IHSA. Our health and safety measures, I'm going to ask Mrs. Griffith, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, to review those next few slides as she did previously.
So as Dr. April mentioned, in plans four B and four C, there would be some portion of students that would be present in the building. We wanted to give parents an overview of the health and safety measures that would be in place for when students return. So first and foremost, everyone would be required to wear a mask. All students, all staff would be required to wear a mask even when social distancing is in place. There are some exceptions, specifically if a student has a medical contraindication and cannot wear a mask, there will be a process for families, a form and a procedure to complete that will allow students or staff members that have a medical contraindication to attend school without a mask. We are looking at additional safety features such as face shields for those that cannot wear the masks that are required. In addition to that, we will be looking at symptom checking. I will let you know, CDC recently updated their guidance and so we are currently reviewing the guidance from CDC as well as the guidance from ISB. Those do differ at this point in time, so we will come out with our guidance once those two entities are aligned. The next thing you'll see is the social distancing. We will be looking at social distancing in all the classrooms. So what that means is spacing desks apart so students are not close together. We'll also be looking at hand sanitizing stations throughout the building. So at our middle schools and high schools, there will be multiple hand sanitizing stations at each entrance, whether car riders are getting in off of the bus. At elementarys, we will have a hand sanitizer in the classrooms, but also majority of our elementary classrooms do have sinks in them so that students will have multiple ways to wash their hands when they are entering the building. In addition to that, there will be an increased cleaning and disinfecting and that is truly probably one of the most critical parts of this plan is making sure that we have all of the cleaning products that we need in place to make sure that the environment is safe for all of our students and staff to be in the building. In addition to that, some of the classrooms where desks cannot be spaced apart, we are purchasing plastic or plexiglass dividers to partition between students so that if they are facing each other at a table, they are spaced apart in a safe way even with a mask on. So that was something really important for us is to make sure that our students and staff were safe in the building. In addition to that, in both four B and four C, lunch would not be served in the building. However, as Dr. April indicated, lunch will be provided to our students in need that qualify for free or reduced lunch. So the next slide talks about what we would do in case there is a confirmed case of COVID. And as I stated earlier, CDC did just update this guidance. Again, it is not necessarily consistent with what is in ISB's plan, so we are reporting to you what is in CDC's plan right now. There is, there are three different layers that you can see here. The first is if a student or staff member had a direct exposure to COVID but has no symptoms and is not diagnosed. Anyone who has direct exposure to COVID will be required to stay home for a period of 14 days. They cannot return to school even if they have a negative quarantine, a negative COVID test. They have to stay home for that entire 14-day period as of today. Currently, the Health Department does require those that are quarantining to complete symptom tracker sheets, which we would provide to the students or staff members. The next would be if a student or staff member is diagnosed. If they are diagnosed and have no symptoms, they will have to quarantine for 10 days since they did get diagnosed with COVID. If they're tested, they cannot be around others, they cannot be around others until they have no fever, no symptoms, and have had two negative test results 24 hours apart. Now, if people are diagnosed with COVID, they have to stay home for 10 days since symptoms first appeared. This is if they are symptomatic. They have to be 24 hours without a fever. That is, has a change from our last presentation. Symptoms have to be improved and they also have to have two negative test results 24 hours apart from each other. Now, as I said, CDC has changed their guidance on this and so we are continuing to follow that and update our procedures. At this time, there is still conflicting guidance as to whether or not if someone is diagnosed, if it is just the people that are within six feet of the individual that will have to quarantine. So it's within six feet for 15 or more minutes is the current guidance from ISB of who would have to quarantine. We have heard that there is a potential that all of the students in the classroom would have to stay home, however, that has not been confirmed in writing. We are also working with our Transportation Department to identify what would happen if a student was diagnosed and had been on the bus. So we will continue to update those procedures as we receive clear guidance from IDPH, ISB, and CDC.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffith. I would like to ask Dr. Wood to speak about the next slide. Dr. Wood is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Just to highlight some of the things that Dr. April had mentioned before related to the remote learning plan, we've taken the expectations for teachers, have turned around the, when they receive an email communication that within 24 hours, they respond back to families for that and then also increase the number of live Zoom meetings or live video meetings from one per week to one per day per course that's there. Those expectations for students, for parents, for teachers, administration, and so on are outlined in our Remote Learning Plan, which is posted on the webpage.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Regarding transportation implications, when we are able to return in person, I'd like to ask Sammy Arbergas, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, to speak about the next slide.
Thank you. Students are going to be able to ride the bus. The current ISB and IDPH guideline allows two students to a seat with up to 50 students per bus. Students must wear a mask on the bus and again, we'll need to double up on some of the routes driven by the drivers and we'd have to utilize our special end transportation companies, Stop Trans, to run regular routes for first students to make up for these limited numbers of students that ride each bus.
Thank you, Mr. Arbergas. And one point to make regarding transportation. The guidelines put out by the State Board of Education and Illinois Department of Public Health regarding transportation do allow districts to have 50 students, up to a maximum of 50 students on a bus. Students may sit fifth, two in a seat, in masks. And you know, our bus rides are anywhere from 20, 25 minutes to maybe up to 40 minutes within our district, maybe even a shade longer depending on construction or traffic or plainfield traffic. And once they arrive at school, the guidelines from ISB and State Board of Education say students are required to wear masks or adults in the building are required to wear masks. However, there's that six foot or more social distancing requirement that on a bus, there's not a mention of that and students may sit two to a seat, somewhat shoulder to shoulder in a seat. So that for myself and my administrative team, those two different recommendations are very difficult to reconcile. Regarding activities and athletics, to the extent that we're on remote learning or in-person instruction, we will have those athletics and activities as allowed by IHSA at the high school level or reasonable and practical at the high school level and/or middle school level. As some of you are aware of, the Illinois Elementary School Athletic Association or Sports Association, IESA, has canceled activities. Plainfield District 202 is not a member officially of the IESA, but that is something to note and the IHSA is supposed to be coming out with some decisions, I believe Wednesday of this week and it will be extremely interesting, we all will, to see what happens with the IHSA and the direction that they provide. And then lastly, the last slide there or the next to last slide talks about the calendar and again, 17th and 18th of August will be District Institute Days. Remote planning of the 19th, 20th, and 21st of August, although we could add some days as needed. August 31st, first day of student attendance remotely or if it is in person. Then August 17th through the 21st, or actually that would be the 26th in our amended plan for distribution of laptops, grade 612. We are looking to be able to provide those to students in grades fourth and fifth also. We need to verify our inventory for that or what we have available. And again, we should be able in short order or very soon to finalize that. Regarding the changes or amendments made, again, going back to the start date of the 24th through the 31st, doing so allows district administration and teams of teacher to again continue to collaboratively meet to polish the remote learning plan, beef up the curriculum and support that are offered to provide a robust remote learning plan to our students that our teachers and paraprofessionals who are helping those teachers administer and provide to students. Does provide for additional days for training of paraprofessionals or teachers' aides to participate in that remote learning. It also allows time for delivery of cleaning supplies and other PPE materials for when we do return to some forms of in-person learning. The adjustment on the date of the laptop distribution provides a little extra time for families to make arrangements to pick those up and also provides some extra days for them to contact our Technology and Health Desk if they run into issues once they have received the laptops. And again, we're looking at the remote learning days of August 19, 20, and 21, but certainly we can adjust or add those as needed. The adjustment to the, or amendments to the plan on teacher and staff expectations is a return of emails within 24 hours on normal business days. And then also teachers providing one day, every day, some form of communication through Google Hangouts or Meet or Zoom with their students. And then again, lastly, adjustments for bringing students back for in-person education. We will start to collaborate with teachers to try to develop some plans as allowable for transition activities. We will evaluate the metrics regarding COVID and will be able to provide what those metrics are again in short order for a return, whether it's from plan or phase four A to four B, four B to four C. And then lastly, the priority consideration for bringing back earlier certain populations of students who are more at risk and then primary elementary students. That summarizes the amendment made to the original plan and the narrative written plan. Again, I'm not going to read word for word, but the original plan and the amendments to this plan or the original plan, again, continue to put safety of staff and students as the overarching priority. We do want to, I want to return to in-person instruction, but we need to crawl before we walk and walk before we run. So that concludes the administrative presentation. I'll open it up to any board members for questions of myself or administrative team.
Thank you, Dr. April. So this is the only item on the agenda for this evening. It is an approval item. So what I would ask is that we move this forward to get it on the table for, for a vote and-- Discussion at that point. So if I could get a motion for the item 4.01, approval of the Return 20 Plan?
Motion.
Heather?
Second.
Second, Rod? Now we'll open it up for discussion. So any board members that have any items they want to share or any questions they want to ask of the administration, now is the appropriate time and then we'll move forward for a vote after everyone's had a chance.
There were a couple of comments on here where the people are asking about the teachers being in the classroom. I didn't know if Jen or someone could respond to that aspect of it, just for the remote learning part?
Yes, yes. So we are going to have buildings accessible for teachers to work right out of their classroom, much different than in the spring where buildings were completely shut down. That is not the case. So there is opportunity for teachers to work directly in their classroom using the materials, you know, in, in school, on school campus.
Anything else Heather would like to say?
That, right now, that was my only thing that I thought needed to be addressed based on the comments that we have been receiving during the meeting. I just think it's important, I find it very important and I think it's more conducive to student learning to have the teachers teaching from their classroom. And I think it provides an easier transition when we transition to phase four B.
Other questions, comments, discussion? All right, hearing nothing. Charlie, if you can call the roll?
Excuse me, Mr. Roby?
Sorry, Charlie, sorry. One quick second, mic's got some--
Oops.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
Sorry, Charlie, I jumped the gun. Totally my fault.
There have been a lot of comments that I think need to be addressed and I think people deserve to know where we stand and why we stand there. So first, I want the public and our teachers to know that this is not an easy decision for any of us on the board. We truly are in uncharted territory and if there was one perfect way to educate all of our students, every single district in America would be doing it, this is why we're having the debate. I appreciate the hard work and effort of all my colleagues here through these difficult decisions and the ones that will continue to lie in front of us as we work our way through this unique time. I believe we truly are making choices from undesirable alternatives without knowing what will change tonight or tomorrow, let alone months from now. I think we all want all of our students back in school as soon as it's safe to do so. We simply differ on the best way to accomplish this and when to accomplish it. And whenever I want to know that regardless of where we fall on the issue, we are all concerned about the safety of everyone. Students, teachers, parents, aides, administrators, support staff, bus drivers, community members, and anyone that have unintentionally left off. I truly meant everyone when I said everyone. Also, please understand that we can't possibly tell you all that we feel and have discussed in the few minutes that we have to speak here at a public meeting. I've already been told I speak too much. I am deeply concerned about the safety of our students and our staff, whether they're here or at home, and I'm deeply concerned about the education that our students will receive. I know I really did appreciate a thousand comments that we received on both sides of this issue, in particular, those who offered personal stories, thoughts to consider, or helpful suggestions. I read every one of them and I'm confident my fellow board members from what they've said is true. Those who are kind and sympathetic and helpful, regardless of whether you agree with us or not, thank you. Many great thoughts were spurred from these comments and many of you helped frame at least my thinking. My heart breaks for the people who are afraid to come back to school, either for medical reason or simply because they're scared. The personal stories have been heart wrenching. The same can be said for the families who are afraid for their children at home or are withering away in front of them. I certainly don't discount either of those. Both are valid concerns and I wholeheartedly feel that we have the resources in our district to accommodate more than one option and to effectively support both. I'm concerned about people who felt this was a great opportunity to attack and demean any of my fellow board members, administrators here, our family members, or our characters. It truly is sad that we can no longer have conversations about the merit of an issue and contemplate the value that we each bring to the table without attacking people. It really has become a, if you're on my side of the issue, you better stay there. If you're not, then I will attack you and try to ruin you, kind of society. We really have devolved into a ruthless and uncaring society, and for that, I'm sorry to see. Either you're with me, or you're against me, and I will try to ruin you. That should not be the way we are in America. There seems to be no middle ground, no room for proper conversation about the issues to try to come to some kind of compromise. When we move on from this decision, hopefully soon, we are all going to have to work and live together. At least, I know, this board attempted to compromise on a plan and put the ugliness aside, and it's my hope that everybody else in the community will do so. Again, there is not one plan that addresses everybody's needs, except a limited return. There is no one-size-fits-all plan. I believe the parents, students, and teachers should have options. We have made some good changes to the Admin's Plan, and I'll give credit there. These changes will minimize the amount of remote learning, put more technology in the hands of our students, and provide for more and better teacher and student contact. These are all improvements. I think that we have the capacity still to safely bring back some of our students who really need to be in school, with some of our teachers who want to be there. This is really not much different than what several of us have always been. And regardless of what decision we make tonight, we know that thousands of people are going to be unhappy with us. There are many students who need to be in school, and many teachers who want to be in school. Again, not everyone, but those who can, who want to come back, or need to come back, I think they should have that option.
Thank you, Mike. Sure. That's good, Rod, go ahead.
I'd like to also add that this is the toughest decision that we have ever made as a board, and...
Uh, here's your attention.
It's a no-win situation, but our administration and our teachers have been working diligently, on a rigorous curriculum, and the positive feedback we've gotten from some parents that were called in summer programs has been really phenomenal. So, as Mike said, there is no easy answers, but every board member here wants the kids back in school as soon as possible, and everyone here, administration and board members alike, care deeply about the safety of our children, our staff, and our community. So, no matter what side of the fence you're on, that's, that's the truth. So, I'm glad that hopefully we can come to a decision tonight and move forward as a community, because, yes, you hear this over and over again, we are all in this together, and together we can prevail, you know, because it's all about our kids. All about our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Any other comments? What's up?
Yeah, I, yeah, I want to say thank you to our District Administration for putting together these 4A, B, and C plans. There's, most of I agree with, there's some parts of it I didn't agree with, but again, it's an excellent plan. I also want to say thank you to our staff. You've provided, the district has provided the Zoom training and phone training this summer, and we have staff that have been working on the curriculum all summer. Just want to commend them for their hard work and diligence, and, you know, it means a great deal that our staff care about our, our children, you know, in this community. And, again, the safety of our students and our staff is number one priority. It is. We don't want to see anybody hurt and crippled from this virus, but again, I don't see any miracle or cure coming down the road right away. And it is very scary. But I just want to say also thank you to the community for your emails and your phone calls, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward. We need your support. We need your help as a community. As Mr. Dr. Robey and Mr. Westfall have said, we are a community, and we have to work together. We may not agree on everything, but again, we have to get through this, and by talking to one another and working with one another, I see great success for District 202. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Well? For vote? All right, now Charlie, I think you're good.
Okay, Mr. Robey?
No.
Mr. Smith?
I still feel parents have a right to choose for their child to have come to school or have remote learning, so feel that the staff has a right to choose whether they want to come back and go be, or stay home and do remotely teaching from their, from home. But saying that, we cannot go through what we did last week with a 3-3 tie. It just causes more frustration, stress, and anxiety on our families and our students. We have to think about our families and students and give them opportunity to make decisions if they need to do now, and we also have to make, give our staff an opportunity to make decisions on where their, their, here within this month. School's going to start here in a month. So, we've set a date, and so I'm voting yes for this proposal that was given, resign it tonight.
Okay, Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes, because as I stated before, the goal was to get our kids and staff back in the buildings, but as of this time, I think this is the safest way to approach that. And I'm confident in our teachers and our administration provide quality, quality for our students.
Mr. Cook?
I just want to say that the majority of our families have spoken. They want a plan that includes an in-person learning option, and they want it at the start of the school year, not at four, six, or eight weeks. Like me, they have confidence in our administration and staff to provide a safe and workable solution that needs to exceed states and C D C guidelines. All of our surrounding school districts have provided their families with an in-person option at the start of the school year. I believe we've deserved no less. My vote is no to this plan.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes. Motion passes. And I would just like to take a moment to, first of all, as has been said, much of what I think I will say has been said by my fellow board members, but I would like to thank each of them for the many hours that they have all put into this between the meetings that we've all attended over the last several weeks, as Mike said before, reading the 2,500-plus emails that have come in to multiple inboxes that we have, to, you know, taking the time to just contemplate and reflect on, you know, what each of us believe from what we have been given is the best choice. And I truly believe that, you know, each one of us has voted our conscience, and thought that we're making the best decision for the benefit of the students and the community as a whole. So again, it's, as always, my pleasure to serve with each of my colleagues, you know, and working towards making District 202 the very best that it can be. I'd also like to take time to thank the administration. They, you know, I think that we've put in a lot of hours on the Board of Ed's side. They have obviously put in far more than that in creating a plan for us, creating multiple versions of plans for us to consider, and again, I would like to thank them for all their ongoing dedication and hard work, and what will be much more work to come over the next month, plus to implement the start of the school year, and then bring us toward in-person instruction later this fall as well. We'd just like to say that, you know, this plan does, allows us to provide an answer for our community, as Mr. Smith said, to allow our families to plan, and our administration to begin to implement a start to the school year that is safe, and also provides for a structured plan for successful and improved remote learning from the spring, but most, also, and most importantly, a timeline to move to in-person instruction later this fall once we can ensure that we can do it in a safe environment. And to also echo what other board members have said tonight, I do look forward to our community coming together to support our school communities, our students, our teachers, and the overall learning process, and I have every bit of confidence that that will happen because Plainfield and District 202 is a wonderful place. It's why the seven of us do devote our time and a volunteer capacity to do this, because we know what a great place this is, and we want to help continue that. So again, thank you all very much for all the time you put into this. It's always a pleasure to do this collectively with you, and I look forward to continuing to work with each of you as we continue to tackle not only more of this challenge, but other challenges and opportunities that come our way in the future. So with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Bob?
Second.
Second. Heather? Charlie?
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Robey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Kerberg?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.